All right, please let the record show that all three commissioners are present along with Council Drew Porter and of course the auditors office. I do have a couple of things to add to the agenda. The, well actually one to add under new business F for the Chamber of Commerce gift card program. And I have nothing else. Does anyone else have anything? I know, then I rephrase it back and said I only had one. But I do want to say that on B on new business, the highway bids, they're actually not due until December 2nd, so that will actually go to the December 2nd one. Anyone else have anything that they like to?
I have nothing.
Okay, make a motion to approve as amended.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries. Have you guys had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
I have.
Okay, there's actually two minutes here. One we did, I had an opportunity to meet with the assessor's office when they opened a bid, so I attended that meeting real quick for those folks. So there should be two of them there. You have any? Thing? No?
No.
Okay, make a motion to approve both of the agendas.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. As I said, the opening of bids will be actually the next meeting, the December 2nd meeting. Those are due at that point in time. C, post closure line of credit for the landfill, Edwardsport landfill, and this is resolution twenty-five dash seven. Drew, if you would, go ahead and walk us through this.
The acronym requires us to have trust indenture and standby letter of credit to protect the potential environmental matters that occur in the Edwardsport landfill. We do this every two years. We have to do this through 2028. We need to post a letter of credit. We need 221,126 dollars, ten cents. We do that with Germany every two years. And so this just approves that. It means our trust indentures, that's a way.
And the positive is that we're three years away from being finished with this. So I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash seven. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have first and a second. Is any question? Not hearing, make a motion to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. We'll need to update the signature page.
Okay, Drew can take care of that for us. Claims, make a motion to approve claims as written?
A second.
Any conversation? Oh, I'm so sorry, I did skip Woody, didn't I? Just talking about Woody and, okay. Well, go ahead and make claims, make a motion to pay claims. Do I have a second? Okay, any conversation, not hearing, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Woody, are you in? Yes, sorry about that. Went right by you. Let's go back to A, Knox County reassessment contract for Assessor Woodward. Talk to us. How are you this evening? Good.
Okay, I had given Drew two books that had the quote in it, the only bid we got, actually. It was advertised for ten days in the local paper. Quite a lengthy ad, if you saw it. Listed all the reasons and all the things that we needed. That it's contracting for a professional appraiser to provide support for the reassessment. And basically those booklets I gave to Drew to share with you guys so you could review them. I do have another one if you need it. One is an original, two are copies. I can tell you that the vendor has been with Knox County since 2010. And I can, if you're interested, I can tell you what the prior contract cost was if you want to know.
Sure.
For, the four year total was 418,763 dollars. And that was for the prior contract, it was like four years ago. This one is about nineteen point two percent higher. But as you know, everything has raised over the last four years. When I first saw it, I thought it was kind of a big increase, but when you look at what they do, what they have to have, the levels of certifications that the employees that they have, you can't get around it, you have to do a reassessment. And it takes four years to do each county.
Are the deliverables all the same?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Are the deliverables all the same? The work, the same, each?
It's exactly the same as the last contract, I didn't add anything.
Okay. Got it.
Have you had a chance to look over?
Yeah, I have no issues.
Great, thank you. Make a motion to approve the reassessment contract for the assessor's office, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you sir, appreciate it. You got anything else for us?
Pardon?
You got anything else?
Just if, when you sign it, let me know, there's two places I think I have to sign.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hey Woody, it'll be at the, it'll be at the auditor's office tomorrow.
Make a motion to pay payroll.
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Letter F, Chamber. Did see Miss Neil in the audience, how are you this evening? Great. If you would, go ahead and turn your mic on, thank you.
There we go. Okay, first off, thank you guys for adding me to the agenda, I really appreciate that. Over the past three years, you, we have done the Shop Knox County e-gift card. Who, that has been a huge success for our community. We have put nearly 550,000 dollars back into our local businesses. And when I say that, a hundred percent of the funds that have been raised through this Shop Knox County gift card program has gone back to the businesses. Zero dollars have come to the Chamber or to any of other, our other community partners. We, we partner with economic development, with the city, with the county, as well as our community foundation, Downtown Vincent's Association and the Chamber. We have with this program been able to highlight Knox County. We've had local, regional and national coverage for this program because of what we've been doing here in parts, if you look at the United States, in small Knox County. So we've been pretty proud of what we've been able to do. What I'm coming here tonight for is asking for another partnership with the county as, at the total of 20,000 dollars, which will go back into this Shop Knox County e-gift card program.
Make note that council did approve this at their meeting last Tuesday night. And it is a, it's a great program and I see no reasons why we would not want to continue to support, support this program. So I would make a motion to approve the gift card program grant for 20,000 dollars. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Anything further?
Thank you, Jane, thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, thank you.
Motion carries three zero, thank you. On the old business, Recorder Hopwood, I make a motion to table that at this point in time as Drew has not had an opportunity to look over that. So I will make a motion to table that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Knox County Solar is still on our agenda, twenty twenty dash two. As we revert back to area plan on 10/21 to look at it, make any kind of recommendations if they have any. That meeting is on December 2nd. My understanding is still at the Good Samaritan Hospital Pavilion, has anyone heard any different?
I've heard lots of things.
Yeah, I have.
I've had, I have questions. I've, this, this whole matter, so twenty twenty dash two has my name on it. Mentally familiar with the work done to create that law. Have no clue, no one noticed me of any issue at all. But all of a sudden, it comes onto our agenda and I don't know, I have been overwhelmed with so many different stories of what's been promised, of what's been said, of what's been told, of bad information about our law. I've seen a draft that we've never discussed in real basis of a need. I am so confused as to why this has gone this far.
Yeah, I saw that same draft and I have no idea where that.
Okay.
No, no idea.
So here's my question. Here's my real county business question. We are, we are handling, whether we want to agree on this or not, a law that was created with great amount of work to protect all entities, especially the landowner. So my issue here is I need a good answer because I hear it's referred to the area plan. So I was told or under the impression that our law was amended or discussion of amending with that draft and/or it was read or discussed. It was then referred to area plan, but now I'm being told that it wasn't. And now we're asking them to look at the law, the way it's written existing from twenty twenty dash two. And they tell us what they think? We make the laws. So I'm not sure why we're asking a non-binding entity to tell us what to do with our own law with multiple projects on the table.
So I'll answer that real quickly. You weren't at that meeting.
Absolutely not.
Yeah. All we have asked is that the area plan look at the current. Again, I have no idea. I have no idea where this other one came from, don't know. All we've asked, and this was Commissioner Ellerman had asked for, and we put it on there, that they look at the current ordinance and give us feedback. Is this still relevant or is it not still relevant? That is all.
We're the only ones that know that, not area plan. They are wonderful people that are appointed by this countywide, the city, the towns, soil and water. What I'm saying is, the, the, the way it works, I was under the impression, and I even called Andrew. Was there a first reading? Because anything that goes to area plan is a document requesting a positive or a non-positive review. So I just don't understand why we're asking people that have, a feedback of what?
To look at the current policy.
It is so robust. I mean, it's very robust. I mean, the decommissioning plan alone is incredibly robust. So I just, I just hate to send people on both sides of the aisle to our area plan for, for what? For nothing? That's where I'm at. It's not fair to, to, to these people, I don't even know where they stand, to go to an entity and be on both sides of the aisle and say, here's what we think, here's what we think, when there's been no basis of any need of change from us to them. That's kind of why I'm like, we're, we're spinning wheels here and doing what? And it's not fair and it's wrong. I think, I think this is wrong. Andrew, legally, I need a legal opinion. I mean, I want to ask area plan why they, you know, if we need to review our special ordinance on hog barns. I mean, what, what do we do as a board to send a, a law to area plan for review and give us feedback? Do we send a first reading? Do we send nothing and just say, look at it? What is the law? What's the process?
I said last week, the, the work with area plan is collaborative. Remember the last time we did the solar ordinance?
I do.
We worked.
Lots of public hearings.
We worked with area plan in drafting it before we sent it to them. Then when we completed it, we sent it to them for formal, we did our first reading, sent it to them, came back second and third. So as it stands right now, we don't have a first reading. We sent them back the ordinance from five years ago to look at it, review if they want to make changes. If they say no, they may say no, then we can make, or they say, here's what we think should be changed and then we would have to draft, a draft based on that, send it back to them. So we don't have a first reading, it will have to go to first reading, if at all at some point. So it's a collaborative approach like last time, but we already have an existing ordinance, whereas last time we didn't have one.
So I just, I just want to be clear, I'm not, I'm, I'm talking a procedural, this is a procedural argument, which I think we're, we're handing people, again, with no binding authority to give us feedback with no knowledge. I mean, there's been no, there's been nothing brought to them otherwise for them to understand the basis of changing our ordinance. And I completely agree. Laws, laws need to be amended and reviewed throughout the years because things change. We learn things, we, we, we add things, we move, remove things. In our case, we abolish laws. But saying that, we, I, I just, I just can't in good faith, as, as what I believe as an educated commissioner, send a very comprehensive law to a bunch of people that have not, I don't know, this, it just is backwards to me, so we're, all I'm saying is, the draft I saw says one thing, I'm hearing other people in our community are being told another thing. I've talked to members of area plan and they've been inundated and have no idea as to why. Have, have either of you talked to our area plan? Okay, and what did you tell them?
Exactly what I just told you, we want some recommendations. We would like for you guys to look at twenty twenty dash two, give us some recommendations. What do you think? Because things, you are absolutely correct, things do change. We look at things a little bit differently than maybe we did in twenty twenty. So we need to look at it, identify, is there a change? Is there not a change? Maybe they come back and say nothing changes at all. However, we have asked for their input.
That is not what they are being told and you all know it. They're being told numbers, they're being told types of farm ground.
Well, again, I have no idea where that draft came from.
You yourself haven't been saying an amount of.
I told you what I'm comfortable with.
You've not told me a thing.
Well, I'm in meetings, that's all I can say.
Excuse me?
Kelly, we're not going to argue about it here.
Well, what I'm saying is, this seems like an extreme amount of confusion with bad information and no basis other than out of the blue, this old ordinance pops up with a draft ordinance and we're, willy-nilly with laws is, is very confusing when we haven't had any one-on-one planning and meetings about it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's see. Announcements, code compliance officer, we should get a report from him at our next meeting. Ready two.
I have a question for Andrew, you are the attorney for code compliance. Are we caught up yet? We have so many court orders, where do we stand?
Oh, on the ordinance violations?
Yes.
Yeah, those are all caught up. We had a special judge a couple times, they kind of slowed it down, they're not always there. And then we're set again.
I was curious, last time we had several orders, we just couldn't execute. We had several.
We, we went to court, we were waiting on orders.
Okay.
And then we had a special judge two months in a row.
Wonderful.
So we have a special judge that's not always here.
Okay.
And so it kind of sits in a queue for a little bit.
Okay.
But those have been processed.
Okay, good, thank you.
And then we're, we go to court every month.
Yeah, I knew, I just knew we had some orders, we were waiting on like the physical orders, so.
And that was only because we had a special judge.
Thank you.
Judge Johnson, who typically handles them.
Oh yeah, he's, yeah, got it.
I have nothing for ready two point oh. Commissioner Ellerman, you have a meeting coming up on Thursday?
Thursday at 1:30.
All right, great.
Uh, who's, who's?
Hearing back from you on that at our next meeting.
Again, who's, is, is it at the courthouse, what?
We're meeting at the sheriff's department.
Okay, what time?
1:30.
Got it.
Okay, and I have nothing for Judicial Center. Public comment, resolution twenty twenty.
I, I did have some, I mean, it is still under Commissioner Reports. The, we had in our email from Andrew, you mentioned EMS contract, I talked about it the last. Can that be on our agenda in December or is there more information that needs to be shared?
I, I mean, it's ready for, in my opinion, I don't.
We'd like you on the December 2nd?
I think it should go on the agenda, at least to read it and then, or whatever, just at least place it on the agenda.
All right, let's add it to the second, December 2nd agenda, we could please? Anything further?
No, that's all I had on my list.
Great. Public comment, as established by resolution twenty twenty dash two, does anyone, yes sir. If you would, please come on the mic and just state your name. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brian Myers. And I'm the manager of FLMSN Farms here with Farm Ground located in Harrison Township. My sister and I maintain and rent our land with the highest standards of preservation to honor our parents, Fred and Peggy Myers, who passed away several years ago that many in this room may know. Now in partnership with 22 other landowners, we are currently working with Orion New Generation LLC to bring another utility scale project to Knox County. Before I dive in here, I want to thank Commissioner Streeter for bringing forward what she did this evening. There's been a lot of confusion here. I appreciate two that have spoken, one has been silent and I'd like to know what that one's opinion is, but if he chooses to keep it to himself, he can. But I'm going to speak to the draft that I supposedly received, which I was told was written by somebody on this board. Before I dive in, I know you got an email copy, but for the record, I want to make sure I provide a paper copy of what I wrote and provide it to you via email. Can I submit this?
Yes, yes, please.
Walk forward, give it to them.
Oh, come on up, come on.
Just want to do the right thing here. All right, so for the record, I submitted this letter on October 21st and again on November 3rd to the Board of Commissioners describing our concerns with this proposed, proposed, again, whatever that means, change to the ordinance, the solar ordinance. I know as you've spoken already that there's been a plan commission thing coming up, we'll just leave that where it is. But I think it's important for us to voice our concerns as you potentially solidify whatever you're planning to do here. I know you've heard from many solar opponents at these meetings. And therefore I beg your pardon tonight that I think it's important that we balance the scales and speak on behalf of the 22 landowners that do support solar development. So two of the proposed changes, again, that, that I had heard of, that concerns the most, because there's some in there, I understand, there are updates to the law, the batteries aren't in there. Screening's not in there and all, all solar providers do do screening?
Screening is in there.
Is it in there? Okay, I was thinking, I couldn't remember how detailed it was in there. Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you. Our main concerns is, is any, any addition of a potential statement that says things about discouraging solar systems on prime farmland, you, you can't, you can't, you can't, you just can't do that. And the second thing is, and most importantly, is any kind of change to the 200 foot setback from resonances. There's been a discussion, again, on that draft I saw of a thousand foot, and that's why I'm going to kind of talk some tonight about those kind of setbacks. As you're aware, there are two utility scale installations that have already been approved and are under that 2,000 foot setback. I'm sorry, 200 foot, that's what I meant to say. And also there's a 50 foot off the property line setback too. So that allows for significant vegetative buffering, which is what solar providers do nowadays. I think it's important that the audience here also knows that, you know, you see these solar installations being built. Your house isn't pretty when it's being built. When it's completed, it will not look like that. Also, the solar installations of the past are not those of today. They're not all just barren fields with a, with a fence and barbed wire. Orion, which is working with us, is going to put in some significant vegetative buffering and they're going to actually go to every homeowner in the area and make sure they're happy with what they have to look at. So, you know, it's already very conservative what's in, what's in there and, you know, in some ways two, even 200 foot is somewhat punitive. If you compare it to our actual codes for a residence that had residential land that has to be next to industrial, the setback buffer in there is 25 feet. Nobody can tell me with just conscience, the non-impact nature of a completed, properly screened solar farm in relation to potential uses of industrial. They're not even the same, the noise, the smells, all those things. And code only requires 25 feet? So to me, the solar ordinance is already, already providing proper distance from resonances. So the takeaway here is that all counties in Indiana, and I'm aware of some that have done that and elsewhere, that have tried to implement distances of a thousand foot, quarter mile, things like that, those exorbitant setbacks are only done for one reason, with an underhanded purpose in mind to stop solar projects. And I want that to be clear, that is the goal. Anybody that says they support solar, but they want a setback of that distance is trying to stop the project without saying it. To put those, those kinds of setbacks in mind, we've got to see those on a map. It's easy to say them, but we need to see them. So I know in the letter that's in front of you, that I sent to you, you've seen an example and there are real world example on page three. Fortunately, I couldn't do a poster night, so the audience can't see this. But it's a 49 acre piece of property that we own. And I've drawn on there a blue circle, which is a 200 foot setback, which is what's in the code right now. And then the other thing I haven't shown on here is all the other setbacks that are required. But the 200 foot setback with also additional setback once you get to the property line provides, you know, excellent setback in screening. I've drawn a second circle on there at a thousand foot. That's what a thousand foot setback would look like, it, it takes out our whole field. That kind of setback and most other properties that are, that they're looking at, they've told us would be in the same condition, they would not be able to do solar at all with that kind of setback. So it's not, it's just not viable. So again, takeaway here is I think this image shows clearly that changing the ordinance in this manner, either by this board or even the, the opponents in the, in the community, this will be a unilateral and punitive decision that landowners do not have the right to reasonably and without injury to neighbors, develop our property for advancement of our families. Lastly, I just want to talk a bit about change. A lot of people struggle with change. Vincent's been here a long time. Back in the 1800s, 1807, the federal government created a land office in Vincent's to start, start selling this land off. Southern Indiana at that time was mostly forest and required extensive clearing to create the farmland that we enjoy today. This clearing continued well into the 1900s, as many people know, and resulted in roughly six million acres in Indiana being deforested to create farmland. Why'd we do this? Settlers sought sustenance and income to provide a better life for themselves and their children. However, in today, in 2025, our finite lifespans and short attention spans seem to permit only one view of farmland. It's beautiful, bucolic, and it's been there forever. Yes, I grew up on a farm myself and I agree. I love the look of rows of crops and I believe the people that work these acres to be soul of the earth and I truly mean that. I'm not here tonight to poke at anyone, but I've got to stand up for our rights. However, However, you know, while it may be all those things, it's a farce to say that it, it's been that way forever and must, must stay that way. Farmers do embrace change. Any farmer that says they don't. They cleared forests, they used to plow, then they went to no-till. And many more technique and technology changes in the industry over their lifetimes. Many people may know this, some may not. Farmers today are already in the energy production business, even before solar came along. According to Indiana Farm Bureau data, forty-five percent of Indiana's corn for grain crop goes to ethanol production. Again, I'm not against ethanol, I think it's a great thing. But we need to put it in perspective. That's two-point-three million acres in Indiana alone going towards the production of energy, not food. So when people say, "Oh, we're taking all this prime farm ground away from creating, you know, food for our country," that's not true. Nearly half, we're, we're approaching nearly half of our farm ground is for the production of energy. So should we use that ground the most efficient way to produce that energy? Yes, we should. So, I stand for you here tonight. My, my career in life took me away from the area. I'm an electrical engineer. So I can tell you, these numbers are not propaganda. I calculated these myself in multiple different ways to make sure I wasn't doing them wrong. If you take an acre of land and you put solar on it in Indiana, per all the laws and all the way that a solar company would do it, using our environment here and the amount of sun we get, over the course of a year, that land will produce thirty-six times the kilowatt-hours of electricity that the same amount of ethanol from that land would, would have in it. So if you take the two types of energy and you convert one into kilowatt-hours, which is what you have to do with ethanol to get a number, you find that that land can produce thirty-six times the energy for our country by doing solar versus corn. Again, I'm not against corn, not against ethanol. But if somebody's gonna tell me we're wasting our farmland, I'm gonna say they're wrong. In fact, with that kind of efficiency, if we really wanted to do that in this country, which I'm not saying that we will, we should have lots of ways to produce energy. It would only take point-five percent of land in the United States right now to produce the energy that we needed in twenty twenty-four. All of it. The entire country could be powered by point-five percent of the land. So what's the takeaway? Solar farms are not destroying the US ability to produce food, and farmland is not being taken out of production by solar at alarming rates, rates as some would promote. Solar farming should be a welcomed, income-diversifying addition that has negligible impact on our cherished farm for food, farm for food infrastructure. All right, so in conclusion, I ask the Board of Commissioners to consider the rights of landowners to use their property as they see fit for the betterment of their family, while also working within all reasonable statutes, seeking to be good neighbors to others, and supporting the greater good of the community in our country. I know this as a fact, the national electric grid is already stretched thin in many regions of the country. And utilities have proven that PV solar alongside battery storage, storage technologies is the most cost and schedule-efficient source of energy to deploy and meet these immediate and growing needs. They can deploy it quicker than any other kind of energy out there. And anybody that thinks all these nuclear reactors are gonna be online real quickly, they're not. So we have to have a bridge that gets us there. And it's also a great bridge. It provides low source of, uh, low-cost source of in, of income and energy for decades to come. So as I close out tonight, I wanna ask you to look upon that image, that forty-nine acre parcel that I showed you earlier, and consider this date, March eighth, eighteen forty-five. On that date, a hundred and eighty years ago, John Myers purchased a hundred ninety-seven point five acres in Knox County donation one sixty-five. A purchase that included these forty-nine acres. For seven generations, the Myers family has cleared, tilled, shaped, tiled, farmed, and conserved this land, providing food and energy, including oil wells and underground coal mining. We stand ready to continue this legacy and preserve this land while ensuring it fulfills its potential for our families, community, and country. Solar is an important element of the evolving US electrical grid, and the twenty-two landowners that I represent are excited to contribute to our nation's energy security. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I read my statement, I would like to comment on what Kelly was saying. Over two weeks ago, I was alerted by an attorney in Indianapolis showing me a document where the two-hundred-foot setback had been redlined, that's what it called, redlined, and a thousand-foot had been put in. Now, if attorney in Indianapolis can view a document, they, that was pretty concerning. So I hope that the commissioners aren't making recommendations versus taking recommendations. So that's, that's worrisome. So I'm Ray McCormick, a farmer from Knox County, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak in public before the commissioners. There is no sufficient reason to deny American farmers the right to produce energy for our country. This land, my family sacrificed to own, not to grow your crop, but to grow the crop we choose to grow. Our forefathers fought and died for these rights that are carved in the principles of the Constitution and enshrined in Indiana law. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
Well, this is the third time I've been here and up here. I'm Joe Hochschild. I'm also a farmer, a landowner. And the forty-nine acres from back there, I can see, that's by our house. That's where our house is. And I haven't seen Brian forever. I mean, I know his dad, I dealt with his dad. And I haven't seen Brian or talked to him for a long time. But I'm here tonight for the homeowner. That's what I'm here for tonight. Thousand feet, yeah, we don't know. We can't. Realistically, there's probably not gonna happen. But if we don't give big feet, then two-hundred feet is what it's gonna be. And as you can see, two-hundred feet from my house, I'm gonna be surrounded by solar. And, I mean, I guess it's just a personal thing. You talk about farmers wanting to farm and being able to farm, I get it. I'm the farmer too. I don't want people to tell me what I'm doing with my ground. But as a homeowner that's lived there for forty-five years, I also don't want to see, be surrounded by solar and have to, I don't know what kind of noise it's gonna make, may not make anything. That's the whole problem. We don't know. Five years ago, you didn't know. I mean, there was no solar here five years ago. You could've drove, who knows how far to see solar. So, is there a reason to look at this ordinance? I think that's the reason, 'cause it's here. It's changed our landscape. I mean, that's the whole thing. It's like, sometimes we do have to change things. Maybe it won't change, but I'm not gonna stand here and say, "Well, okay, you guys are right." Just do it. That's the way it was. No. I want somebody to look at it, walk out there, walk two-hundred feet from my house. Walk five-hundred feet, it may not make much difference to you, how close it is, but it does make a difference to me. Just a little more room, a little more space. I mean, I hate that you're losing some money. I mean, you will. I mean, there's no doubt about it. But the amount you're gonna make, even if you change that, it's gonna be astronomical to what you're getting for crops. I mean, so, and I don't know what you do with the other few hundred feet, what they do with that. But also, I know the solar people will work with the homeowner if they need something from them. Actually, for this piece, if they need transmission lines, they would come to you and say, "Yeah, we can give you some room. We'll give you five-hundred, we'll give you a thousand feet from your house if you let us put transmission lines through your property to get to your property." So, that's what I'm just here to say. They can do it. Will they do it? I don't know. And will you guys change anything? I don't know. But that's why we are here, 'cause we own homes that we don't want surrounded by these. I know they're gonna be here. I mean, I know how many acres, kind of, is gonna be there. They're gonna be there, you can't stop them. But just give us some room. That's all that matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I am gonna make one clarification. You mentioned my not being at a meeting. I was alerted by receiving our agenda, and then that, this was on, I received this draft, and I believe it's reckless to talk about laws without an attorney. I, I, and, and this is where we've come, so.
Okay.
For clarity.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, our next meeting is on- Unless you have something else, would you like to add?
Well, yeah, I could like to ask some questions myself.
Sure.
My name's Stan Reader, Federal Mine Inspector, but, um, been in coal mines for a long time. Uh, but, um, what, what, there's things I wanna know. It's like, well, first of all, how many acres are we talking, how many thousands of acres are we talking about? And then, I wanna know who's paying for this? Because almost all of solar and wind is, is federally subsidized. I mean, private companies aren't coming and putting this in without taxpayer money. You know, people need to understand that. And, like, um, and then you talk about lots of farmland. Yeah, we got a lot of farmland, but it's going fast. I mean, you know, I drive, I, during my course of my inspections, I drive, uh, Missouri, Indiana, Illinois. I mean, you go down to Route fourteen in Illinois and see out by infield, and there's a big thirty-five-hundred hideous solar farm out there. Go down towards Prosperity Mine, Pe- Petersburg, uh, and they got five thousand acres out there. And it's like, uh, you know, that's a lot of land. And how many megawatts of power are you getting out of it? Has anybody ever thought about that? You know, like, a coal mine, you know, may set, may take up, like Edwards Court, might take up a couple hundred acres and puts out, you know, hundreds of megawatts. And these are, you know, how, what's, what's, do you know what the megawatts per acre you're gonna generate is? I wouldn't. Do you have a storage for it? No, you don't. 'Cause the, so, there is no storage for that, 'cause once the sun's not shining, they're not producing any power. And if you do want storage, then you gotta build these, build, build these big battery arrays, like they're talking about doing in Illinois, which is crazy, 'cause Illinois is sitting on so much coal. There's hundreds of years of coal sitting there. If they wanted to make good use of land, like, put a, put a coal-fired power plant next to some of these long, long mines, and, you know, you can be generating power day, night, anytime. You don't have to, what, as President Trump says, don't have to wait for the wind to blow and watch TV. And, and, you know, and, and then something else is, what, what's the cost per kilowatt hour? Do you know what your cost per kilowatt hour is?
I don't know.
Is, is, well, I mean, I just, I just, these, these are, these are questions. These are the questions that the community needs to know. I know this stuff because I research it. I live it day and night, and I see it.
If you, if you want to speak to you-
No, let's, no, let's-
I, 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 I mean, I, I mean-
Please speak before we both talk separately.
Well, I mean, this is, this is the community.
Folks, please, up to this point in time, we have been very civil. Our meetings have been very civil, and we wanna keep it that way.
I wanna keep, I wanna keep it civil, but I mean, these are important questions. These are important questions needed to ask. What's, how much per kilowatt hour? What are we talking? We talking, because generally, solar and wind, I mean, you, you look at any wind, you go buy any wind farm, 'cause I mean, I go up through Springfield, you go up the sixty-three, you know, half the time, then things aren't even turning. So they're not putting out shit. Excuse my French, but I'm just saying. You know, so I mean, you know, you, you gotta think about this. How, how, how much does they, you know, this cost? And, and, and once these government subsidies dry up, which they will under Trump administration, 'cause everybody knows that this renewable stuff is pretty much a scam anyway.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be offensive, it, it's just the truth. Because, and without the subsidies, without the government paying for this stuff, it does not exist. Entrepreneurs don't come in here and build solar power unless they're getting government money. And once that government money dries up, they, 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 they go belly up. And who's gonna, who's gonna, who's gonna deal with it after that?
All right, thank you.
You know, I mean, th- these are questions that probably the whole public, and if you wanna know something, I, I, I've got a whole host of information in this head of mine. But, uh, you know, 'cause I've been preaching this stuff for thirty years. You know, 'cause we're just now getting rid of this climate hoax scam.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, you know, and for the record, CO2 does not cause climate change. CO2 is plant food.
All right, thank you.
I did have one more thing too. I'm looking through my email of the past couple of weeks. We've had another department head resign, and I, I wanna, um, she's here, so, um, thank you for-
Oh, I didn't see you there. Thank, hi Carter.
Uh, thank you for the notice, the, the respect of giving us such far notice and, um, all the work you do.
Thank you, congrats.
The one job that I couldn't imagine doing in this county, besides working in the jail. Anyways, so I'm assuming, um, we have a job, all of our department heads have job descriptions. Has there been a discussion about, um, advertising for this job?
We, we just got the notice yesterday. We haven't had a chance. I, I talked to Carter yesterday afternoon, and congratulations. I think that's awesome, fantastic, so, I envy you. Um, but when we get ready to do that, we'll most definitely advertise for that position.
I think we should go ahead and advertise. I mean, it's a very, um, technical, important position, so.
Yeah, most certainly can, that's, uh, that's fine with me. Uh, we can go ahead and, um, get with Amanda, have that advertised. So, I think that's-
You can work with her on getting the specifics about the position. Um, she'll fill in the blanks, Amanda will.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's nothing further. This meeting, uh, our next meeting will be December second at ten AM here in the City Hall Chamber. Make a motion to adjourn. Second, we are adjourned.